Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So good evening, everyone. What I'd like to do is begin with a prepared statement. Well, actually, technically, we'll start with public comments, and then we'll do correspondence. So we have anybody who wants to make any comments, public comment? I know we just spoke about the Zoom links and all that. We'll work on that.
I'll say something.
Of course.
It's very difficult if we don't see the materials, all the materials, not just here, even on the PNC. And we were told, you know, that they aren't always, every document doesn't have to be put on there, is what I was told when I brought that up. I also brought up an issue with one of the rooms, the way it's set up, you can't see the people on the commission. You don't really know who's speaking. Sometimes this garbled, you know, I was told. And I, you know, I come from a background of design, so, you know, easily you could rearrange the room, and I suggested that. She said to talk to you.
Okay.
That's why I'm talking to you. I think it's very important for the public to be involved, and I think that you all probably feel that way, too, even if they don't agree with you. So I think it's important that we know how people are voting, who's speaking. I mean, I can tell some people's voices just because I speak a lot, but, you know, it's very important for us as a public to be, you know, heard and to be able to see and see how people are voting. And I guess that's pretty much it. I don't know. There might be something more once somebody else speaks on here, but I deserve the right to speak again.
Thank you for your comments.
And you have a hand raised, Paula Antoni.
Paula Antoni?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
First of all, good evening, Board of Selectmen. There are quite a number of issues. I'm not going to discuss them all tonight because there's just too many, most of them regarding the P and Z issues. But a lot of what Diane said, I agree with. These are not just annoying issues. These are illegal things that they're doing, not following Robert's Rules of Order. There's other issues with room conditions, with, as Diane said, what's being viewed on the screen on Zoom. Important things, like half the P and Z board is cut off. The applicant presenters or their lawyers are cut off. Most of the time, when they, the P and Z takes a vote, we cannot see how they vote because we can't see the whole board, and they don't raise their hands, or they don't even nod. So we're muted, so we can't request a hand vote, you know, one by one, et cetera. You know, it goes on and on. I'm going to prepare a list for you because these are very, very serious issues that are not running our town very well. And another big issue, I've written to you and mentioned it in a couple of my letters. I'm sure you're very busy, so you haven't answered yet, but very important issue with our town planner allegedly possibly concealing or deleting content of a recorded meeting. That has to be dealt with, and I think that's very, very serious. I do not think she should be allowed to operate as normal while this is being investigated, and I'm wondering if you are investigating it. This is nothing about a personality. This is about actual actions that were taken that the FOI case that was in their hands voted, broke some laws of the state, and is punishable by a fine or jail or both. So I take that as very serious. And I don't trust that everything that's handled will be done properly. Diane also knows that we never get paperwork on things. Paperwork is never attached to meetings, meeting minutes, I mean. And, you know, like I said, it goes on and on. There are many, many, many things, and I will compile a list for you. Now, regarding tonight's agenda, I am against the $800,000 for the turf field lights. The main reason being, I think the people of Bethel were deceived when this whole project was presented to the people of Bethel. Every, I saw several presentations on a stage by the company that was installing the project, and it was really, really glossed over about the lights. And it was said in a way that made the people think the lights were included. Only when they were questioned on it, usually by me, did they kind of say, well, they're coming later, you know, never saying, it's going to cost $800,000. Now, I don't even want that to come out of the ARPA funds. I don't want it to come out of any funds. I think it should be a referendum. That's the fair way because the people were fooled. They thought this was a free donation and that everything was included. Now, how could lights not be included? I think it still says there's no lights included for the stands and the walks. That's ridiculous in my eyes. So I am against that, and that's going to come up later in the agenda tonight. Another issue is the police vehicle. It says you're going to use ARPA funds. I am all for the police. I think they deserve the equipment that they can get, but the town has to be able to afford it. And that also shouldn't come out of ARPA funds. I think I said that. So if the town can afford it, I'm all for the police vehicle, or I think they actually asked for two. So I'm going to leave you with the fact that I will be talking to you more. I would love to speak to all three of you about these gigantic problems with the P and Z actions and the, also, the, all the questions I sent you about hiring and firing practices and how you're going to handle this missing recording issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your time.
I need Paula's address, please.
Paula, can you say your address for the record, please?
19 Jacobs Lane.
Thank you. And we have somebody else looking to chime in here. Any other public comment? Okay, so moving, I'm sorry.
Brayley Dan, 25 Linder Lane. I'd just like to say I am in support of the lights for the turf field. Not familiar with the prior speaker, but I was certainly well aware of the turf field project and followed it closely as it proceeded this past last year. And it was certainly well-known to myself and I think anyone else that followed the project closely that the lights were not to be included in.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Of course.
I'm there. Did you get the rest and name everything?
Your first name, sir?
Righty.
Last name, Dan?
L-D-A-N. L-B-D-A-N.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, do you have information about all the ARPA funds total and what is left and what was used for?
Yeah, and we can certainly share that after the meeting. I'll be happy to give it to you right away.
Okay, because I, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what determines what's usable for that, what's not usable for that. And, you know, I was thinking, and I don't know what the total was that we got, but it seemed to me that the HVAC that we all voted to do for the high school seems like that could have been used for that. And yet, we had to pay out of our taxes for that. So I'm a little confused about why that wasn't used for the HVAC, so maybe you can.
So we'll be talking a little bit about HVAC later, so we'll try to cover that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we're moving right along. I wanted to read a statement, and just so everybody understands, this is under correspondence. It's actually correspondence from me, but we had, we had had a FOI a while back with the Board of Finance regarding using cell phones and computers and such when we're in a meeting. So I'm going to read the statement in for the record. This was to all elected and appointed boards and commissions, FOI meeting policy. While a meeting is in session, the following protocol should be followed. Personal devices should not be used to communicate through any means, including text message, email, instant message, social media post, or conversation. An exception will be made if the device is being used as part of the meeting session, i.e. a member participating in the meeting via phone conference. If there's a need to communicate regarding personal business during the meeting, the member should excuse himself or herself from the meeting and exit the meeting room or request the chair to move for a meeting recess. Any conversations by members or questions should be addressed to and through the chair. Talking, asking other member a question, or whispering in any comments to another member should not take place. At public meetings, the public generally expects that business being conducted is public business. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, as amended, the public has a right to know what the public official say at public meetings on topics related to the public's business, unless such statements are being made during a proper executive session or otherwise exempt from disclosure under the FOI Act. Failure to adhere to the business of meeting and/or the information protocols could subject public officials to a FOI request, requiring the disclosure of information that may be sensitive or inappropriate for public knowledge. In addition, the subsequent proceeding should be commenced with the FOI commission, which may result in a significant expenditure of time and resources, a fine, board or commission actions being sent aside, et cetera. Thank you, thank you, and please keep above in mind at all times while you're participating in the board of mission meeting. Daniel Lee Carter, first selectman. So as I mentioned, this was, this was an appointment based on an FOI we had a while back. And, you know, it's really important that we realize that, you know, we can have, you know, personal computers and phones as long as we're conducting business for the committee. So any kind of, you know, outside influence or texting outside or social media strictly forbid. Okay, so right into the record. Also, with respect to correspondence, we do have correspondence from Paula Antoni, who just spoke. And I think, you know, basically, she covered the most of it in her, in her public comments, so I'll set this aside as well. All right, so that was it on correspondence. First selectman's report. I won't go, I won't go, you know, too deep on the report, you know, basically, I'm, what, four weeks into the job? So things are going, I think, I think as well as they could. We have a long way to go, obviously. We have welcomed a new police officer, Bill Paskowski, last week, and Little Logan and his wife Danielle. So we have new members in Bethel family. Last week, we had the World Cafe through the school. You know, very, very much centered on what's happening with students and some of the challenges that they have faced. You know, we've had a huge increase in the number of interventions in the schools, and this was a way for the community to be involved and actually, you know, come up with some ideas to take action about we can mitigate those risks. So thank you to Dr. Carver and the folks over at the school. I had my first office hours last week. Most of the questions were about P and Z. You know, some of the issues with transparency we've been talking about and taxes. Obviously, we've just had, you know, the assessment, and folks are, you know, we're all trying to get our head around how that's going to impact us long term. Also met with Wes Cog just yesterday. Wes Cog is the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. It was actually my first opportunity to have them in Bethel and with many of the department heads to talk about funding opportunities there are for various projects in the region. So, you know, obviously, we're looking for opportunities to take advantage of grants to accomplish a lot of things that we want to do here in the town. And I'll say, finally, I had some opportunity to meet with the leaders of the veterans organizations actually today. And the veterans in our town, you know, they provide a lot to us. We're going to have, Memorial Day coming up, we know there's Memorial Day Parade, and we're going to do an effort to clean up Veterans Hall. You know, we have a lot of uniforms in there that are just, you know, been a long time, need to be cleaned, and the veterans organizations are very interested in helping us out with that. So if you get a chance, chance to thank a vet in town, you know, please do so. So the last thing I'll talk about is our communications person. I think she's five days on the job. We're looking at revamping the website. You know, we just did that a couple of years ago, but it has become very difficult for a lot of users. And one thing we found out that, you know, the company we've been using actually has a whole different system in place. So we're exploring the opportunity, maybe even have a town app and some things like that, to make it much easier for the folks at town to access information. With that, we'll also beef up social media use with respect to the upcoming, the, I'll see the referendum and the public hearing. We're already starting to get the information out on that, which I think we're, we're earlier than we ever have been before. So that's, that's my first selectman report for this meeting. So moving on to consideration of the Board of Selectmen special meeting notes, so may I have a motion to approve the special meeting notes for February 21st, 2023? Now, so everybody's received those and looked at them? Okay, I'll take a vote, all in favor? I oppose, motion carries. I like a motion to consider the board, excuse me, consider approval of the Board of Selectmen's special joint meeting minutes from February 21st, 2003. So, second. Have you all seen those? Like to make a vote or take a vote, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Next up is consideration, I like a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from February 27th, 2023. And all in favor of approving the minutes from February 27th, 2003? I, motion carries. And next up on the agenda is the, the, next up on the agenda is consideration, actually, let me have a motion for consideration of Mor Vista in their application to film a movie here in Bethel. At the old train station parking lot. So, what you have, your packet? So we have the minutes from the old train station committee, and we have a company named Mor Vista, which they've done some filming up at Holandia recently, and they're looking to do some filming for their movie over at the old train station. As everybody knows, the old train station is owned by the town, so they're looking, they have an agreement with the broken symmetry to film inside, but they need access to the parking lot. So through the old train station committee, they have, they've come up with a user fee of $300. They're also going to use the GP room for something, I guess, over here, $25 an hour. They've got the required insurance. They're looking at keeping some of the parking spaces open for our businesses, so they've coordinated with them. They've got some old flow, flow parking out here behind the municipal center, and they've talked, if there's any need for security, they're going to pay for it. Overall, it was approved unanimously by the old train station committee. Any questions or discussion? Yes. Okay, so I'd like a motion to approve the Mor Vista application to film a movie. Actually, I apologize. I can take a vote. You already had the vote, the motion. All in favor of approving Mor Vista on their application to film a movie? I oppose, none, motion carries. I like a motion for consideration and discussion of approval of turf field lighting. So this was tabled from February 21st. Had a lot of discussion, the reason we tabled it, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and as we've heard tonight, this was something we've talked about for a long time, getting the turf field lighting. And it was, obviously, more or less agreed to by the town because we've had somebody put that field in, and their generosity is super important. And we've decided that we were going to carry our load. Now, one of the reasons that we delayed this was really to make sure that with ARPA funds, we were doing the right thing and that we could actually use the ARPA funds for it. Some questions came up about, you know, what we could and couldn't use ARPA funds for, so we delayed it for a couple of meetings. I've worked through the town attorney and through the comptroller for the town. We are in fact able to make those expenditures through ARPA funds, totally legal, and it's, it's totally aligned with what we're going to do. So any other discussion from the Board of Selectmen on the subject?
I think it's a great asset to the town, and there's many organizations that use those fields. See now they put the turf in there that they can use day and night. If it wasn't for the neighbors, they could probably use it around the clock, but I'm in total support of using the ARPA funds for the purchase of the installation of the lights.
I'm in favor of lighting the field. You know, I just hope with the revenue, you know, it's not a huge amount of revenue, but that we use it wisely. Look forward to the time that we need to replace the turf field, maybe work with the comptroller and see if there's a way to set up some sort of sinking fund or something where we could put that money so we, you know, because obviously, it's not going to last forever. We're going to need to replace it. So that would be my hope that, you know, we're able to work closely with the comptroller and the car strike commission and set up a way to take those fees. It's the maintenance or the replacement of the field down the road, but I'm in support of that. The field should be used at night. It's beautiful.
Brian, I believe the Board of Selectmen has already voted to set up that fund. I'd have to go back and, but I'm pretty sure that fund was set up by the Board of Selectmen. We haven't had funds for it yet, but I know Dr. Carver is there.
I've been on the board of finance. I think I was on the board of finance. Anyway, as long as it's there, like I said, I support your guys' field, and I think lighting it at night will be a huge asset to the youth and residents in town.
Yeah, it certainly does open up some opportunities for, you know, other towns come here, you know, do championship games, all those sort of things. So I think there's an opportunity there. It's also worth noting that in this, we are also including the security cameras. So the motion will be up to that number. We have one security camera on the middle school. We're going to probably put two others in. We have two in the middle school. Okay, I just know there's one, like, facing that direction, and I think we're looking one, like, maybe on the flagpole side and one on the far end of the field. And we're also going to get the gator that we need to help maintain the field. So that's all in the motion for, well, it'll be a motion up to $800,000.
Yeah. Dan, I believe you're going to have to maybe add an agenda line item because I just noticed the agenda now says turf field lighting. So you might need to add a separate agenda item to add those other items, just to be, you know, it only talks about turf field lighting on the agenda.
Fair enough. Okay.
Marty, is Marty here?
Yes.
Marty, are we, are we allowed to add that and be okay with the vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, it's a regular meeting. You can add it to the agenda.
So when we, when we discussed this before, do we have to add it as a separate agenda item, Marty, or can we just include in the motion to have it up to the other two items?
I would put it as a, as another agenda.
Okay.
You can modify what you've got on there, but I would put it as part of the agenda first and then vote on it. I think if I'm not mistaken, at the last meeting, we had other information, like, I think the only thing we've got now is the actual lighting sheet. It was in the, when I think at the last meeting, there were other.
Yeah, it was, it was listed, the last meeting, consideration of turf field lighting, security, and maintenance.
Right.
Okay. Remember that now. Dr. Carver, did you have a comment?
Record based on one of the comments. So just knowing the history of the project, the, what the donor agreed to put all the conduit, get all of the, the system set up for the lighting and the actual lighting itself was the commitment from town. So I just wanted to say that was always the conversation from the beginning of the project.
Thank you.
To kind of reinforce.
Excellent. So. Well, okay, so we have to add it.
Prove this in the way that you.
Yeah, so we have to prove adding it to the agenda. So I'd like a motion to add consideration of a turf field lighting, security, and maintenance to the agenda. Should I do have to withdraw that then? Well, we, we have to, we have to vote. It's all one, one number, right? So we, we have, we had a motion, we, we discussed the approval of turf field lighting.
I'd ask that you amend your motion and we carry the balance over to the next agenda. That's what I would ask.
Approve the 700.
What I'm saying is, amend the motion to take the 750,000 and drop it down to the next agenda line if that's legal, so it'll be 800. Right. Buy everything is what I'm saying. Is that legal, Marty?
Yeah, as long as it's clear on the record that everybody knows what's being talked about.
Yeah, we're just going to move the 753 and add it to the bottom agenda, and we'll take one vote on the 800.
Okay, so, so we're, we're going to add the 750,000, 3,000.
Drop the balance down to the next.
Okay.
So you're withdrawing those motions?
Yeah, you amended it, right?
Yeah, so we, we, it's a little confusing doing it that way. We should just withdraw the motion and then add it to the agenda and go forward.
What I'm saying is you have to put it on public record that you dropped it in 753 down to the bottom of the next agenda. That's all I'm trying to say. Unless you want to vote on 753 and then figure out the math on the rest of it.
Yeah.
To make it.
I see what you're saying.
Just drop that number down to the next agenda.
Okay, so, so we make a motion, you can make a motion.
All right. Did you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we take the sum of 753,158, which is the cost to actually purchase and install the lighting on the turf field and move that down to our next added agenda item and vote on that totally.
Second. All in favor of the motion. I oppose, none, motion carries. Okay, so then the new agenda item, consideration of the turf field lighting, security, and maintenance. So motion to discuss. So now, so now the motion is that we approve $800,000 to come from ARPA funds, which includes 753,158 for the turf field lighting, a balance to be used towards security and maintenance.
And just add it not to the.
Not to exceed 800,000. Very well. I accept that as a, I'm drawing a second. Sorry. Okay, so all in favor of the motion?
I.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thanks, Brian. Next up is the consideration of an appointment to the Board of Assessment Appeals. I've received a letter from the Bethel Republicans. Dear Mr. Carter, on behalf of the Bethel Republican Town Committee, I'm pleased to submit the following recommendation for appointment. Kathleen Jordan of 88 Old Hollyville Road to fill a vacancy on the Board of Assessment Appeals. Thank you for consideration. So. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Next up, consideration of the Aquarian land donation. This was tabled from February 21st. And motion to discuss?
Sorry, or motion made?
And second. So as, if you look in your packet, we had, we had land that was basically given us, given to us from Aquarian. It's over from, across from McCow Park, about five acres. Sounds like it's beautiful. There's a nice waterfall, great opportunity to put some trails in. Right now, I'm going to be looking for, actually, I'll make the motion because we've talked about this before. I make the motion that we accept the land on the condition that the attorney receives a release date. All in favor?
I.
I oppose, motion carries. Next up is, I'd like a motion to have a discussion about the HVAC project at Bethel High School. All in favor? All right, so if you'd like to go ahead and tell us what's going on.
Jen, Craig, Raza from Colorado is on the Zoom call. Um, so just, just to quickly answer the resident's question, this, this bid, this bid has nothing to do with the HVAC grant. This, this is the base bid that was sent out just to replace Unit 2, which is over the science lab at the high school. It's not, we have not heard yet about the HVAC grant, and, and we're actually prohibited by the state in the office of school construction to use ARPA money to offset the cost of that. So that, that, that project is still up in the air in terms of, we haven't been heard to do it. So I believe it was due from last meeting because there were some questions. So, um, I believe it was due with the last meeting, cause there were some questions regarding the actual bid, and we wanted to have.
And some other.
That's right.
Some other issues in terms of.
So that's why we have Craig on the, on the line, um, to be able to answer any of those. Craig in this firm did all the design work and can provide much more detailed explanation, um, for that. But do you?
That's true, so we, um, we went after we had our discussion about some of the questions of why did we receive two bids and the numerical value or price was, was large in difference. And so we went back to both of the bidders and asked them to refine their scope to just what is needed to replace the existing, um, we call it year two unit, which is the air handler that services the science rooms at the high school, which is currently broken. And um, we see the information back from both of the bidders, and we also asked Craig at Colorado to do a detailed analysis of what uh was in their bids to compare, cause there were some questions about, it was something missing from the lower bid, um, and. An issue with structure because the higher bid included structural steel. So, um, based on Craig's analysis, there is no, there are no structural issues at the high school that we're aware of. On the structural steel was, um, we think included by mistake in that portion of the bid from the higher bidder, because um, that would be, is more appropriate for the grant work that we still haven't uh heard back about the grant for where they would be running new ventilation ducts um throughout parts of the building that have never had air conditioning before. And that's where you might need structural steel, um, but for this unit swap out on the roof, it is not necessary. So we continue to recommend copper group for the uh, to award this bid, they're the lowest bidder, and we also felt more comfortable with them because they had much better references and their bid was more in line with their estimate. There was one thing Craig found, which is that uh, both of the groups use the same subcontractor to supply the equipment, and there was a mistake in that equipment bid where the air compressors are needed for the air handler were not included, so the, the price. Yes, there's an adjustment in the price, um, so both of it's actually went up. Um, so the new price from copper group is five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred.
Five hundred what?
Five hundred and sixty.
You have, guy, she handed it out.
Sorry, um, and so to reiterate this, the funding for this has, is coming from the Board of Education.
I mean, I'm the one who kinda held it up. Craig, a couple of questions I had. When I looked at the bid, um, the low bidder was basically installing the unit. But if any work had to be done to the pitch pockets, if anything happened with the curb, um, he basically washed his hand of it and said it's someone else's responsibility. Did you see that in the bid when you reviewed it?
Yeah, what he, what he says, and he kinda contradicts himself a little bit, cause he does say in one place, uh, includes roofwork. And other places, he said if there is something, he would provide it for, provided by uh somebody else or a markup for somebody else, so he contradicts himself in the bid.
No, cause I, 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 cause are you using the existing curb or is that getting changed? Like, what are you doing up there?
No, units right now sit on Dunn and Steel.
Yeah, okay.
And the replacement units were designed to fit on the existing structure. Cause they are, they're exact, they're basically exact dimensionals uh of what's there now to uh replace.
No need for a new platform, anything like that?
No, they'll, they'll both fit on the current platforms.
And stairs and everything are gonna stay in place, cause he also made note that he's not responsible for any metal work to include securing of stairs and whatnot in this bid.
Yeah, there are no stairs on these platforms, they're just being uh replaced in kind.
And will the building inspect, are they the same weight, or is the, is the building inspector gonna require a letter stating that the roof can support the wa- weight of the unit?
We've already done uh the structural analysis of this equipment in a study that we've done. So if that's necessary, we can provide that, but there's, there should be no need for that.
And, and the units that you specked out, the brand and all that, what's the life expectancy on those units?
Well, that's, that's kind of a loaded question, but the typical traditional unit, you, uh, depending on how well they're maintained, uh, couldn't last, you know, twenty, twenty-five years if they're all going well. Um, you know, barring any mechanical fair, the current unit that's there now, you got fifteen years out of it before the heat wheel failed. But everything else is working.
So in, in, in your opinion, we don't need to worry about pitch pockets, we don't need to worry about any roof work, because you kind of agreed to it in the bid. So you feel comfortable that we're gonna come in at, what was the number? And there's, and there's no contingency.
But I was just gonna ask, is there any contingency?
Craig, we, we asked, I'm sorry, it's coming back, we asked the bidder, um, so we asked, so this is the copper group, we asked, asked off a group, if we should hold a contingency, um, and they recommended a typical small contingency of about eight percent that they tend to recommend for, just in general and average bid. So they, I, when we originally talked about contingency, I think we were worried that perhaps they needed to, that maybe something was missing, right? Uh, so there, they did not recommend uh us, for us to plan for any large work.
So you're, you're coming in with your original request to us because you're covering the cost of the units that were missed in the bid?
Yes.
And again, to the engineer, you've gone through this bid with a fine tooth comb, and you feel very comfortable with it, uh. You know, we, we can proceed forward, cause.
Yeah, I, I reviewed what they provided. Uh, it appears they, way, way they're referencing it, they should have everything necessary. I'm not anticipating anything missing.
But you do have money out, out of the, the eight hundred and fifty-five, if, if you needed a contingency for something. There's just no contingency built into this face bid here, but you do have other funds that are available.
Yeah, correct.
He's all, that's right.
Uh, yes.
Who's gonna run the project? Bob?
Bob, Bob, likely will, uh, Colorado also has some supervision. Um, we, Bob, it pretty much oversaw the projects of nine and thirteen, which is the auditorium, and that, because it's such an easy project.
Let's not say easy. I've heard that a thousand times.
I should say.
That's why I get nervous.
The next one, ERU one. A six one, they all have different orders and things like that. That one's much more involved, and we may bring on like an ownership or something for that. But right now, um, just based on the, the simplicity and what we've been able to accomplish before, uh, Bob oversaw it, was it last time? The replacement of.
You kinda have an ownership right now, but that's why, you know, I was hesitant that we need an ownership, because you know, when you have bids that far apart, there's a problem. And I can't believe both companies missed the.
You have to remember this, we, we've gone twice, the first time we didn't get it.
Alright, I'm ready to vote.
If you'd like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that the, we approved cap group, uh, base bid of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars.
No, I thought we were approving five hundred and twenty, and that you guys were covering the.
We're, the fourth type of all, the whole thing, it's all of the.
But the, the bid exists.
Okay, so uh, all in favor of approving the copper group bid of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars for more of it? I, I oppose, okay, motion carries. And uh, last, last item on the agenda, actually not last, two items, um, like a motion for consideration of approval funding for a police car from ARPA funds. Okay, so this is something we spoke about before, um, obviously doing the car out of ARPA funds gives us an opportunity to actually have it almost right away. The minute we approve this, chief has basically said before the car, and he thinks he'll get it right away. So uh, all in favor of consideration of approval funding of a police car of ARPA funds in the amount of, actually, I love the amount here. I think since we set up to sixty-five.
It's in the minutes, it's in the minutes. Is the police ten forty?
Three sixty. Police department is twenty, we did the police first, remember?
Yeah. He was here, so that's why it's not. These requests, um, oh, it says that we're gonna reduce five oh one by sixty thousand, is what we agreed.
Sounds right. Okay.
Yeah, five one oh one, sixty thousand, that's what we agreed to.
Five one oh one is salary?
So where do we do cruiser, it's not in here?
The paragraph above it, sixty-two.
Two five twenty-one, that's right, alright. Sixty-two five twenty.
Sixty-two five twenty. Alright. Alright, so I'd like a motion of, to take sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one uh from ARPA funds to purchase a police car. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
I.
No, motion carries. Uh, last thing on the agenda is consideration approval, excuse me, uh, a resolution for emergency grant, so, um, what I'll do is I'll just read it, and then we can make the motion. Basically, this is authorization for the town of Bethel that, um, I can enter the contracts to deliver uh the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, so I'm gonna read it, read it here. Resolve that the town of Bethel, Connecticut may enter into and with deliver to the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and for the resolve that Daniel Carter as first selection of the town of Bethel, Connecticut, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Bethel, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which he, she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. That's a mouthful.
I made a motion that this board uh, read the resolution that.
First, you have to make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so. Very much. Yeah, so we need a motion to actually add the ru- uh, resolution for emergency grants to the agenda. All in favor? I, opposed, none. Now we can take a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, some motion carries. Okay, that is it. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I have documents for you to, don't go away.